Dr. Phil, Dr. Phil.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Nice to see such a great crowd here tonight. And I would like to officially, for the last time, call the Cumberland School Committee to order on Thursday, November 14th, 2024 at 7:01 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Agenda. Need a motion to approve? Motion by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Item A, Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting, 10:24, 2024. The Special Meeting Minutes from 11:07, 2024. Item B, Approval of Minutes from the Executive Session, 10:24, 2024. The Special Executive Session from 11:07, 2024. Item C, The School Bus Inspection Reports, 10:11, 2024, and 10:22, 2024. Item D, The Enrollment Report, 11:04, 2024. Item E, The Transportation Report, 11:14, 2024. And Item F, The Residency Torrance Report, 11:14, 2024. Motion to approve by Mrs. Feather?
Nope, Rogalski.
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Rogalski.
I'll second it, though.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next item is Personnel Announcements. Mrs. Dreszek.
Good evening. I have four announcements this evening. We have three appointments effective November 12th, 2024. Olivia McIntyre, Academic Coach Math at the McCourt and North Kilmarnock Middle Schools. Melissa Rogers, Grade One at Community, One Year Only. Sarah Pepper, Kindergarten Community, One Year Only. And we have one retirement after 18 years of service, effective June 30th, 2025. Patricia Hanley Almanzar, ELA Essentials at McCourt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dreszek. Next on the agenda is the Report Out of the Executive Session Meeting on 11:14, 2024. Report out of the Executive Session Votes. We did not take any votes tonight. Next item is a vote to seal the minutes of the Executive Session. Motion to seal by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Mrs. Vogel. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, Madam Chair. First up, if I could have Principal Deb Malcolm come up, help me with the first agenda item. The Educational Support Professional of the Year. Take it away, Ms. Malcolm.
I promised Dr. Thornton I wouldn't stand on a chair tonight. As you can see, there's a height difference between Mrs. Simeyo and Dr. Thornton and myself. So, good evening, everyone. This year, I asked the staff who to nominate as the candidate for the Support Professional of the Year from Cumberland Hill. All of the responses I received nominated the same individual, Terry Simeyo. I have had the pleasure of working with Terry for many years here in Cumberland. The last nine years, I have been fortunate to work with her in her role as paraprofessional at Cumberland Hill. She, her interactions with the students along with staff have always been kind and professional. She is an exemplary paraprofessional and truly gives her 100% every day. Terry assists in arrival each morning, greeting students and families as they arrive at school. This sets a positive start to the student's day. There have been many instances when Terry supports students who may be dealing with anxiety and difficulty with separating from a parent or caregiver. In a truly gentle manner, she is able to encourage and support the student through the transition into the school. This year has proven to be unique for Terry as she has been taxed with supporting first-grade students, one of which requires a significant amount of one-to-one support in the area of self-regulation and social-emotional support. Terry continues to play a major role in collecting data in all aspects of the student's day related to his academic skills, as well as data to develop a behavior plan to support the student throughout his entire school day. While most individuals may have already given up, Terry continues to encourage and support the student, setting specific boundaries and attainable goals. With her support and ongoing guidance, this student has made significant gains in a short period of time. Terry continues to be a valuable part of the Special Education Team at Cumberland Hill. I am extremely proud that she has been named Cumberland Support Professional of the Year.
And, oh, whoa. So, you get this special plaque. Cumberland School Department, 2024, District Education Support Professional of the Year, presented to Terry Simeyo in recognition of your inspirational actions and excellence in educational support. Thank you.
And, Madam Chair, this year Terry does retire the first plaque that's upstairs, so she used the last name on the plaque. Yes, the last name.
I just want to thank everybody, Deb. Thank you, Dr. Thornton, everybody that voted for me. I came to work for the School Department 24 years ago. I thought it was going to be a two-year run while my kids were young and they were in school. But here I am, still here. Honored to work for the Cumberland School Department. It's a great school system. My kids, all four of them, have gone through the system and are all past college and doing well. And I am so lucky to work at Cumberland Hill with the best work family you can imagine. And I just want to say thank you for the acknowledgement. And I acknowledge all paraprofessionals that get out there and work very hard every day to support our students academically and their well-being and social. And thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And next up, if I could have Principal Michelle Carter come on up for this next very special award.
Good evening, everyone. Josephine was not able to join us tonight, but I would like to celebrate that Josephine Molina, second grader at Garvin, is a Feinstein Golden Ticket winner. So what this means is her ticket was selected in a raffle a few weeks ago. A $5,000 grant was sent to the school in honor of her golden ticket. And then she was able to select one charity of her choice to send $500 to. And she selected Paz Watch Community Cat Center in Pawtucket. So she was so excited when we made the announcement at school. I was hoping she'd be able to join us tonight, but I think it's past our bedtime, so she's probably getting ready for bed right now. So congratulations to Josephine.
And next up, we have some athletic recognitions tonight, Mr. Crowley, don't we?
Yes, we do, Dr. Thornton. Thank you. Coaching ladies, come on up here, please. Bring your hardware, absolutely. Awesome. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us once again. We'd like to recognize our girls' cross-country program who repeated as state champions this past November 2nd at Pontigan's at High School. Come and place five runners in the top 11 in securing, which is unheralded, securing, scoring 34 points, which in cross-country, low numbers are better. They've beaten, their second-place team, North Kingston, finished second with 88. And they really buried the third-place team as well. It's the fourth lowest score ever in a state meet, the lowest score ever, ironically, by the 1977 Cumberland team is tied for that. But it's not anything short of amazing what this squad did on that day. Chasing them around, you know, last year, did we have a chance? But this year, at every point, they set their goal and they got there. So let's introduce you to them, all right? Freshman finished third in the state, also freshman state champion, Cece Ludwig. A senior finished sixth in the state, four-time All-Stater, Kylie Defusco. Finishing seventh in the state, she has been running for three years, All-State twice, Charlie McHugh. You're welcome, Charlie. Senior, two-time All-Stater, finishing ninth, Rose Tamisto. Sophomore, first All-State nod, finishing 10th, Anna Bianchi. You're welcome. Sophomore finishing 23rd, just missing All-State by a couple of seconds, right? Gabby Studoff. Good job, Gabby. And The Rock, a four-year runner for our program, finishing in the top 40, M. Burke. Also, before I get to what I want to wrap up with, Coach Carpenter, last year was the Boys Coach of the Year in the State of Rhode Island. This year, she is the Girls Coach of the Year in the State of Rhode Island. And before pictures, I'm sorry. So before pictures, so then they qualified. I was here last week to ask you for them to go to Manchester, Connecticut, to run at Wickham Park. They finished second. They weren't done yet. They finished second in New England behind Champlain Valley, Champlain, Union Valley, Vermont, which is a powerhouse, by about 20 points. And for anybody that's ever been to a cross-country race, 20 points on that course is miniscule. And it's a great job, the top finish in Rhode Island team, once again. It's the best finish in 25 years when there were runner-ups in 1979. So an amazing feat for these outstanding young ladies and Coach Carpenter. Congratulations.
All right, moving right along. Now we have, Mike, the Flu Clinic. Just a reminder, Tuesday, November 19th, four to seven, another chance to get your vaccination. See Cumberland High School cafeteria. And we have the website if you want any more info on that. And you can also sign up before at schoolflu.com. So please get your vaccination. Mike? Next up, as always, construction updates. As you know, this is our fourth go-around, our fourth reno. And we're at community school. Give you a sense of what's happening here. Bottom left, that's the old cafeteria back in the day when it was in the basement of community. That's what it looks like now. Walls come down. Over here, that's also where the kitchen was, part of the kitchen. And to the right, that's where they served the food. That was the food-serving area. So that's all been demoed. Over here, that's the office where Principal Vaughn was. That's her area. Over here, a bathroom being gutted. And to the far right, that's also in the basement area. Mike? Ashton, over here, we have some finishes. We're never quite done. We kind of go back and finish these things, so little details. On the left, the loading dock, wanted to finish that off. That got done. Bottom left, we wanted to put a gate in. We put a fence up and we realized there was no gate. And balls go over the fence when the kids play and can get the balls back. So we put a gate in. That was a nice improvement. On the right here, that's where we store our power machines. We wanted to have a nice storefront on it, so we did that. And more importantly, on the upper right, that's the stage. The soundboards are now in. You can see the example of top there. And we have inside, we have another soundboard and lights. The one thing missing still is the Scotty Dog. We have a Scotty Dog coming. That'll be custom-made, that'll be put up there on the, on top of the stage. That's exciting. Over here, I'm happy about this. New heating system at Ashton. They were 30 years old and useful lifespan on 20, 25. So that was great to get that in place. On the right, new pumps. I know, not exciting, but it is good to know we have a modern heating system. And in case you missed it, the plaque, as you're walking in the left, that is the new plaque. There are only four or five plaques in Ashton. You've got to keep track of the plaques, but that's the new one. And you see the School Committee is on there along with the Town Council and the Building Committee. Everyone's on the plaque. That's exciting to see as well. And over here, another finish at Ashton. We put in some barriers where the cars are, that they're wooden. And that was finished off last week. That's also in place. And last thing, the high school. We, in case you didn't notice, we did some work at the High School Wellness Center over the last year. We did the gym floor over for the first time in many years. We also are doing some roof work. Inside, the weight room was very dated, circa 1970, with a really bad flooring system. So it's all new now, new flooring, new machines. And next door, Mr. Crowley no longer has an office over there. He got sent out. It's now a second station for students to work. We have some cardio machines in there. He is living somewhere else, but we took him out of the wellness office. So we gained a teaching station for the kids. So the Wellness Center is looking sharper. So that's exciting. And I couldn't leave without thanking the School Committee. For the public, the job you see up here is just part of the job. There are many, many hours the committee works outside of this meeting. There are subcommittees, there are other obligations. And it's a great time of commitment. And sometimes you have to make really difficult decisions with the info you have at that time. So it can be really, really difficult. So Ms. Friedman, I believe, eight years on the committee. Ms. Fiorello, 12 years. Mr. Collins, five. And Ms. Rogalski, four. So just want to thank you all for your service. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. And I'd actually like to just say a couple of words about that, again. It's on the agenda, right? So I just want to say, for being on the School Committee for eight years, I have learned something from every single person that I've served with, from Paul DeMonica to Ray Salvatore to Steve Hess to Heidi Waters, Jennifer Bernardo, of course, everyone up here, Amy Rogalski, Amy Vogel, Carrie Smith, Dennis Collins, Carrie Feather, Amy Goggan, Bill Denon. I always say, if I have a question, I'll just denon it and he'll let me know. And of course, Mr. Fiorello. So the only two people on the stage that have been up here as long as I've been up here are Mr. Adams and Mr. Fiorello. And so I do, I do want to thank Mr. Adams for his advice and insight and his bad lawyer jokes. But also, I want to say that you really are a gift to the School Committee. And we are lucky to have you. So thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Fiorello for always having my back, for always teaching me what to take really seriously and what not to take so seriously. Don't sweat the small stuff. He always knows how to lighten the mood. And we've been together through a lot. And some of us were here during COVID and through some of the worst times. We have served through two mayoral administrations. We've served through two superintendents. There's been a lot of stuff that has gone on. So thank you. Sometimes when I'm up here, if something happens, I just like, he helps me out. He gives me advice or tells me to calm down or whatever it is. So thank you for that. And I also want to thank my husband, who's here tonight, and my kids and my parents for campaigning and sacrificing time from being with me and just listening to me over the past eight years. So I am looking forward to getting my Everother Thursday back. But we have been blessed to have a School Committee that's all here for the right reasons. We always talk about it's for the students, it's for the kids. What can we do? We've been thankful to have a great collaboration with the town. And it is why Cumberland is top five. I think when I joined the committee, Cumberland might have been, we were trying to get in the top 10. And now we're in the top five. And I can't, I can't, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about all of the efforts of Mr. Devanna and how he has helped us to get there as well. So it's been a great run. And I'm looking forward to the next committee. Congratulations. And I know those who are staying, you are in really good hands with the rest that will be on the stage. So thank you, everyone. All right, next on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committees. Item A, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. The Fiscal Management Subcommittee met this evening. We have four resolutions. We have payment of the bills. And we got, received an update from Chartwell's, the new food vendor. The reviews are, continue to be very high. People seem to like the food that they're being offered. And the actual purchasing is way up, à la carte breakfast. So they're doing very well. And they're in the process now of expanding stations so we get ready for rotisserie chicken, sheet pizza. So they have the stuff purchased. It has to be installed. So they're already looking to expand. So they're off to a good start. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, for your last fiscal School Committee update. I know we still have payment of bills and resolutions. Next, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update, Mr. Fiorello?
No, we did not meet. We will not meet again. Just, I will be happy to meet with the next policy chair to go over the policies that were kind of prioritized and get done next. So there'll be some continuation there. So anything I can do to help.
Next is the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. We also did not meet, but I extend the same offer to whoever is the next chair of Achievement and Communications Subcommittee. We're all not going anywhere, so feel free to reach out to us. And then next is District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update, Ms. Rogalski.
We canceled for this month, so we did not have a meeting. But same stands for whoever takes over for me.
Next on the agenda is Old Business. Item A, Discussion and/or Vote to Approve School Safety Plans. We did discuss this in Exec. And for apparent, you know, obvious reasons, school safety plans are not something that we share with the public. So I need the pleasure of the committee on this one. Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather and Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda is Comments from the Public. If anyone, Mr. President Kinch is in the audience.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a second on behalf of the Town Council first to congratulate Ms. Simeyo on her achievements and everything she does for our students. And also, the girls' cross-country team. Every time I am here and see the success of our students really is one of the more enjoyable aspects of when we get together to see what our students do. But finally, I want to congratulate our departing members. I really want to thank you sincerely for the cooperation that we did on behalf of the residents budget years, selecting our vacancy, the professionalism, I don't think we can ever explain out of all four. So I hope personally, the friendships we made, I hope that I get to still see you in the future and involved in town issues. And I want to give you a lot of credit to how you handled yourself during COVID. True professionals, and we're very lucky to have, never mind the whole committee, but you four as well. And on behalf of the Town Council, I just wish you all much success. Thank you.
Thank you, President Kinch. Come on up to the podium.
Hi, everyone. My name's Bill Denon. I live at 27 Old Meadow Lane. I just wanted to thank, I don't like the word departing, but the departing members for all your hard work and your dedication. I think it's often said that being on the School Committee is a thankless job, so I'd like to thank you for being on the School Committee. And I know firsthand that it's a lot of work and it's a lot of hours. In my, when I was a volunteer with the Boy Scouts, we used to say it was an hour a week per kid, right? It's kind of the same thing for the School Committee. It's an hour a week per student. It's a lot of hours. So I appreciate all the work you've done. I look back at four years ago where we were. It's already been said, but during COVID, you all went through a lot. And I think for every decision you make, not just during COVID, but you can make everyone happy. And that makes the job really tough because I know we want people to be happy and it's just not possible to make everyone happy. So I applaud you for all the work you've done. I think, you know, you say now that you're going to get your Thursdays back. Eventually, you're going to start tuning into the School Committee meetings. I know this from firsthand experience. And you're going to be watching them and you'll be texting each other saying, can you believe they did that? Or, you know. So when you're ready, I invite you to join the former School Committee Member Support Group. Thanks again.
Thank you, Bill, so much. Okay, seeing no other comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? You're leaving. Okay. Oh, no, you're on the next agenda item. Sorry. New business. Item A, Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Overnight Field Trip Requests. The first item that is listed here, we will be tabling and taking no action on that tonight. And so we'll move to item two, which is the Girls Hockey Co-op, Lake Placid, New York.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Fiorello. You thought last week was the last time, but I, we stand corrected. We have three requests. We'll take them one at a time. The first thing is our girls' hockey program is co-op with Lincoln. And it used to be co-op with the school to the north of us in One Socket. But seeing that school has now left into Scholastic League and they're a prep school, we had to find a new partner for our girls' hockey program. And therefore, we co-op with Barble, Pontigan's, Bayview. We now have a tack-on from One Socket and a girl from St. Ray's. So we are now the Northern Rhode Island Yeti. If you're a fan of the Edmonton Oilers, you'll love our uniforms. But that's the colors they went with. So through fundraising, I know that the Barble program travels a couple of times a year. The first trip is an overnight to Lake Placid on December 27th through 29th. The Barble Booster Club handles all of the finances. Barble is the host school, so everything runs through them. Also in the packet, if you noticed though, in the Lake Placid one, I included the Barble Handbook in regards to what their overnight field trip policies are as well. And they're similar to ours, but I just put that in the first packet so you could see what they are as well. they are as well. And so, each parent travels with each student to Lake Placid, and that's the first one.
Mr. Fiorello?
How many girls do we have in the hockey program?
We have two currently who are registered.
Okay. Has that been the normal number for the last?
Three or four. The school to the north of us, Cherry picked a couple of our kids from us. But usually, anywhere between two and five. Lincoln's in the same boat between two and five. And then St. Ray's has one. One Socket has one who's an add-on. The host school, Barville and Pontigan's, are the majority of it. But costs are split equally among all the co-ops. It's not by student. It's by, it's cost effective for us as well.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogowski and Mr. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero.
The second field trip for the girls hockey program is to Martha's Vineyard on January 18th and 19th. It's a Saturday and Sunday. No educational time will be missed as during the first one. Same thing, the kids' parents will transport, two parents will transport our students. They'll ferry over, spend the night in Martha's Vineyard, and return on that Sunday.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Rogowski. Do we have, second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We also have the goalie, by the way, in the girls hockey team, Emily Ramonda. She's fantastic. Next up is wrestling. So, this is the only field trip the wrestling will take this year. It's the one they take every year to Sanford, Maine, to the Sanford Invitational. I did put in your packet some of the other schools that are participating. North Providence is one of those. Hendrickson sometimes goes, but I'm not sure if they do or if they're not going this year. But Coach Gorman and Coach DeVito, they're taking 15 wrestlers up there. It's a very high caliber wrestling tournament. They will leave on January 3rd at 10:30, a half day of dismissal, and they'll return that Saturday, January 4th. Coach Gorman, Coach DeVito will travel with the parents as well. They do stay at the same place. It's kind of like a condo unit that they get, Village by the Sea. All their fundraising is done through their booster club to pay for the overnight as well.
Motion to approve by Mr. Fiorello. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vogel and Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Crowley.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Discussion and our Vote on Community Elementary School Interior Renovations, Phase Two, Scope of Work, Recommendation to Award the Guaranteed Maximum Price Agreement to Alberg Construction Corporation.
Chair, we have Megan Hevrela from Colliers to take us through this item.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here. And as the other speakers had mentioned, thank you for all of your effort and your time that's spent, not only dedicated to the faculty, the students, but also improving your school facilities. And I was just thinking back there that hearing many of you have been in those seats for eight years and 12 years, you've had a substantial impact on these projects that we get to work with you on. So, you know, where you've come in the past four and a half to five years is pretty wild in terms of what we've accomplished. And I hope you can see the amount of hard work that everyone's put into these projects and the end results. And here we are actually presenting on your last major renovation within the district, Community Elementary School. So, last year, we opened up the new addition, and here we are, the existing building. We're looking to complete all of the interior renovations that were also done at the other elementary schools. So, the end is near. 2025 is when all of it's going to come together. And then, we have BF Norton. That's going to be the next big project. So, what that means for tonight is we do have the GMP, which is the Guaranteed Maximum Price. And that's who we have already selected, Alberg Construction. And where we've landed right now is the final cost for the project. So, before you tonight is the GMP in the amount of $9,244,137. So, this does have an allowance that's included within it. The cumulative total of those allowances do equate to about $320,000. So, at this point, we do give this recommendation to the school committee for this GMP. And certainly, if you do have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Thornton.
Can you talk about the scope? Is everything we wanted in this GMP?
Yes. So, we've mentioned before in the past, like new. So, what we were able to create with the Cumberland Hill renovations, because we had some excess money, this was pre-COVID, that did also provide the opportunity to make sure that what we were able to accomplish in Cumberland Hill, we continued that throughout the other elementary schools. In particular, for community, we have been able to replace the entire roof. We're doing all-new windows. We are doing new ceilings, new painting. We're doing some new cubbies. We are updating as much of the building that we can within the provided budget. But it's not going to be brand-new, but it will be like new. New furniture, too. That's a vague one.
Mr. Fiorello?
I just want to say that having been on the Building Committee for several years, Glenn Olborg and his site manager, Lee Matthews, has been absolutely great to work with. Their company has done an outstanding job on the projects they've handled for us. And I fully support this and make a motion to approve it.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Rogowski. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. Thanks, Megan.
Thank you again for all of your dedication over these past couple of years that I've gotten to work with you. So, it's been a pleasure and certainly appreciate your time.
Next item on the agenda, Item C, Discussion and our Vote to Approve Home School Instruction Request for the 2024-2025 School Year.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Feather?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogowski and Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next, Item D, Discussion and our Vote on Arts Act Two Grant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McGrath will give us details on this new exciting grant for Cumberland.
Good evening, everyone. I believe it was a couple of weeks ago, the Department of Education came out with Act Part Two, which is an arts initiative grant. Cumberland was awarded $172,000, of which we're intending to complete the work that we've done at the high school auditorium, which is lighting. We've already done the carpets, a couple of other things in that auditorium. So, this would allow us to complete the lighting. We also have one more kiln to purchase to complete all the kilns for all the elementary schools. And then, depending on how the bids with the lighting comes in, that will determine what the remaining balance is, and we'll make those decisions once we know what that is. But that's the Act Part Two.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Rogowski. Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? Mr. Fiorello?
Mr. McGrath, does this complete all the projects for the auditorium that we've talked about over the last few years?
I believe so.
Except for the HVAC, I know, right?
Yes, I believe the carpets were done. I'm not familiar with what was discussed.
I know the sound system was done.
Sound system's done.
But the lighting was the big piece.
The light's the big piece, and this is.
Else, if I could, the stage was also repaired.
Right.
Good.
And the curtains.
Oh, and the curtains. Even better. Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda, Item E, Discussion and our Vote to Approve Resolutions. Mr. Collins?
Madam Chair, we have four resolutions. SCPR-11-2024-183 through 186. All four resolutions passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve Resolutions, SCPR-11-2024-183 through 186. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. And next, Item F, Discussion and our Vote to Approve Payment of Bills. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. We have payment of the bills in the amount of $4,269,748.31. Payment of the bills passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee three to zero, and I've moved passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve payment of bills. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins, for your service as the Chair of the Fiscal School Committee. Next, next item is School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. Any comments from the school committee? Mr. Fiorello?
I just want to say that over the past 12 years, there's been a lot of changes. You know, Dr. Thornton was here, then he left, then he came back. But as Mrs. Friedman said, the one solid foundation that we've always had is Steve Adams.
I think someone disagrees with that.
Yeah, maybe. But I want to just thank you for all of your guidance over the years. So, it does not go unnoticed. I also want to thank all the members that I've served with, Mr. Denon, who's here in the audience, everyone up here, of course, and the various cast of characters that I've worked with. And the one thing, as Mrs. Friedman said, the one thing that we've always had, even though it would be argued, because even though we may generally get along while we're up here, we do argue at times. We disagree on items. But the one steady concept has always been the same thing. We're always trying to do the best thing that we can for the students with the tools that we have available to us. And as Mr. Denon said, sometimes, you know, we make some very tough decisions with the best information that we have at the time. And during COVID, that was especially true. Mrs. Friedman, you did a great job, I think, managing those meetings because they were something else. And quite honestly, I don't think there's a decision that I voted in favor of that I would change my vote on at this point, knowing, having the same information I had available at that time, even in hindsight. So, I just want to, and I also want to thank all the administrators that I've worked with, central office personnel, who have been always very willing to sit down with me and talk to me about problems and help me understand where they were coming from, and also to learn just the sheer amount of information that we have that we have to wrap our heads around. And this may sound a little silly. I want to thank the parents, too, for trusting us to really take care of their kids. And especially, again, I go back to, I want to thank the emergency services here in town, the police, the fire, the rescue. They have been an absolute great partner to work with, our SROs, that have helped to keep our buildings safe. And, you know, one of the things that a lot of the time that we don't talk about is the fact that the fire department does a lot of safety training with our smallest kids, whether it's like the little smoke chute, stuff like that. And they've always been really just fantastic with helping the kids learn that and not be scared. So, it's been really a pleasure to work with the town and everyone that has worked with us to try to really do the best we can for everybody that lives in this town. So, although I won't miss a lot of the responsibility, I will miss working with the great people that I've worked with. So, and as Mrs. Friedman said, I'm not going anywhere. If I can be any advice or help or even some historical information, I'm just a phone call away. So, thank you, everyone.
Other comments from the school committee? Oh, Mrs. Vogel?
Not to echo what everyone else has said, but I do want to say a heartfelt thank you to all the outgoing school committee members. Your contributions have helped bring the Cumberland School Department to where it is today. And I honestly can say your guidance, your contributions, what you have taught me over the last few years will never go unnoticed or forgotten. So, a huge thank you, and you all will truly be missed. So, thank you.
Mrs. Rogowski?
I'm going to start with cross-country. Being a cross-country parent and having been at that course in Wickham where the girls got second in New England, I don't think people understand what an incredible accomplishment that was. New England's is the top six schools from each state in New England, plus individuals. And when they run, it's like Braveheart where the ground shakes. It's amazing. But that course is very difficult. And like, the accomplishments of those runners, those girls this year, is simply incredible. So, huge congratulations to them. I just want to say thank you to everybody. I had a particularly rough, one of the most horrific periods in my life, sitting on the school committee during COVID, that some people know. And I think someone said, and I don't even remember, I might be making this up, that it like, it takes a village to raise a school committee member. And I remember, I joined and I think I texted Bill Denon, and I said, is there a school committee for dummies book? Like, I don't know what I'm doing. And right at the beginning in my first year, I was subject to some truly awful things. And I found my village. And my village was the people sitting up here. My village was Mr. Kinch calling me. My village was Mayor Mutter coming to my house. My village was Steve Adams calling me. You know, my village was people coming out to support. And they truly made a difference, and I will never, ever forget their kindness in that. So, a huge thank you to all those people for getting me through that time. And there were lots of happy times, too. It was great. But for all the administrators, for always making us welcome, for always being willing to answer questions at the schools and in central administration, you are incredible. And we might make some decisions up here, but you are truly the guiding force of this district. And I wish you all the luck, and I hope that the committee continues all of the work that it's done so far.
Mrs. Feather?
Made me sad. So, Mrs. Vogel was actually much more formal and professionally eloquent with what she said in her comments. I can't say too much because I'll get emotional. But I want to say a special thanks to not only the formal, you know, Mrs. Friedman, Mr. Fiorello, to Karen, Mark, Amy, and Dennis. I value your friendship. I value your guidance, and I very much appreciate everything you've done. Looking forward to forming new friendships with all the new members that are here and continuing the work to support the students of Cumberland.
Mrs. Feather? Any other? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair, which I'm probably going to say for the last time, Madam Chair. I wanted to start with just one thing on Tyler. I think we all know that Tyler Perea has been being treated with leukemia and his whole family. There is so many people in this community that have come together and have done so much for him. And one of the big things that happened a few weeks back, I think it was on Halloween, was that, you know, they had the Golden Glow Day down at McCourt Middle School, and where the students were actually cutting the hair of administration. And I just was so amazed in seeing all the support and all the money that's been raised and everybody coming together in the community. It's gone from the grade schools all the way through the high school and all of the team that's been involved. So, thank everyone. I know one of our new school committee members is very involved with the family, I think, too, in doing things. So, kudos to everyone in this town for really helping out and coming together as a community. And I think it goes to show exactly what I've seen up here for the last four years, and that is a community, a strong community. We may be the elected ones, but there's a foundation below us. And for some of us that came on four years ago, our foundation was you, Mrs. Friedman. It was you, Mark. It was the people, it was Bill Denon asking questions and, you know, bothering people. It was Mr. Demonica, you know? So, yeah, it was about, it was about asking and having everybody be there. So, I know that when you're saying, we'll be there, I know you will because our past members have been there as well. You cannot build on what we've done without that foundation. So, thank you all. I'm going to be the other Carrie who would cry, so I'm not going to say much more. But thank you, all of you, for everything that you've done for us and taught us and taken us through for the past four years.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
And Principal Carter, your hair looks awesome.
Any other comments from the school committee? All right.